That's better.
Yes. So I finally get to see Ms Randolph.
Yes ma'am.
Thank you so much. You have been real hard work at this, trying to get this set up.
Dropping stuff over here on this table.
So, do I call it to order? Is this the ma- okay.
Yes ma'am.
So, the Village of Lincoln Heights Planning Commission Meeting, Thursday, April the 8th, 2021, 6:30 ish, should be called to order. And I'd ask you to call the roll call, Mrs Brenda?
Yes ma'am. Mrs Dolores Lindsay?
Yes.
Mr David Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr Morris Hodge?
Yes.
Mr Michael Harris? No response. He did tell me that he was not going to be able to make it to this meeting. And Mr Charles Shockley?
Present.
Okay. Mrs Lindsay, we have four who are present. We do have a quorum for the meeting.
Okay, thank you. Well, let's go back and I think we've all introduced ourselves to one another. I want to say thank you for, it's been almost two years since this committee has met, June of 2019. We can't let this happen again. We need to meet even if we don't have an agenda. We need to keep ourselves abreast of what's going on. Just kidding, nobody wants to meet to meet for no reason. But, um, two years I do think is too long. And if we're going to be an effective committee, we really probably need to meet to continue to update ourselves on what our role is and how we can best assist the city. And as much as we are advisory to the council only. So, the agenda for tonight is Mr Steven Easley is going to present to us on the Innovation Hub, the Howard and Carlia Daniels Learning and Innovation Center. I have to say for myself, I don't know how the rest of, what's going on with the other members of the committee. I had received some information over two weeks ago. Again, Mrs Randolph has been very, very industrious in trying to get us the information we need to make for this meeting. And I think she's done a phenomenal job. So, I'm gonna ask Mr Easley if he would go forward and and give us an overview of what this committee, I'm sorry, what this hub is all about and why it should be recommended to the council.
And Steve, I'll just, any type of PowerPoint information you need to pull up, I'll pull that up as you speak. I have the floor plans and the PowerPoint, so whatever you want me to pull up, I can go in that manner.
I would say, go into the PowerPoint.
Okay.
I don't know how well my signal is in the area that I'm in, so I hope you all can hear me.
Yeah, we can hear you, uh, we can hear you well so far, brother. I hope everybody can see the PowerPoint as well. I'm trying to make this a full screen here. Is everybody still seeing the PowerPoint?
Yes.
I lost it for a moment, but I'm wanting to-
I don't see the PowerPoint yet.
Okay.
I'll pull it back out and try this again.
Okay.
And then Steve, if not, Steve, I can kind of talk you through what we're seeing. I know you kind of know it verbatim. So, just for the sake of the meeting and time, Steve, if you need me to, just say what slide that we're on, and then you can, you can go into it, and then we can do it that way as well, whatever, whatever works best for you, brother.
Right now, all I see on the screen is I see a spinning wheel. I think I'm in an area where the signal is not, okay, now I see it. What is Innovation Heights?
And also, and also Steve Carlton, Carlton and Mr Vince is on as well too, because I know you're in a tough situation. Thank you for, you know, calling from out of town. So if you need them to take over.
I'm trying to get a better, I'm moving to a different location to see if that helps. Because right now, I don't know if you can hear me. Can you hear me or no?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay, perfect, perfect. Alright, so I'm not able to see the screen entirely, but I do see, I believe we're at the, what is the Innovation Hub and why is it needed in Lincoln Heights?
Yes sir.
Basically, overall, the Innovation Hub is a pathway. Alright, what we want to try to provide with Innovation Hub is a pathway to success, no matter where we meet someone at. If we're able to meet them as a youth, that's great. We can help them understand what solution they want to solve and give them the tools and the skills that's to do. You know, we've stood on, we no longer ask them, what do they want to be when they grow up? We ask them now, what do you want to solve? What solution do you want to bring to your community or to your life? And we give them, we equip them skills and the resources. So if that is someone who is young, is that someone who is a young adult, elder adult, it does not matter. We all have things that we want to solve, but we all have that we know that we can make a difference in, and we're just trying to give them the skills and the resources to do just that. That's what Innovation Hub will solve, what we'll serve as.
The problem, yeah, on the problem and solution slide, we're 50% below the poverty line.
Alright, Dorance, can we go to the next, can we go to the next slide please, sir?
Yes sir.
Alright.
If you're, if you-
So here we just, we've kind of outlayed, laid out some, here we've laid out some of our goals, as you can see here, and how we've outlined those goals and expenditure of those, of the finances that we intend to raise and how we intend to do business. I mean, it's pretty straightforward. We try to be very transparent with everything that we're doing. All the monies that we have raised, we can account for, we've shown how we put it to work in the community. None of us are taking any form of salary, anything like that. What we bring in is what we put into the community. We put it into programming, we put it into the people who need it most. The reality is, we're blessed to be able to have streams of income, so we don't need the income. What we need is the opportunity to serve. And this is what we're doing, and this is how we raise the money so that we can help others and serve others.
Next slide.
Next slide, please.
Yes sir.
Alright, here it just kind of speaks to our mission and talks about some of the different things that we would love to see within the next 18 months being provided and in the community have access to. Everything from being able to come into the space and create a physical product, understand how to market their product, understand, create a place where that, not only the product can be created and marketed, but also so, understanding the different things that they need to do to be in business. What are consumers looking for? What are the community, how is it impacted by your product or your service? Or how can you learn to do something better to change your own life, whether that's learning how to train or do proper fitness things to help your body, learning what you're putting in your body, understanding how to cook and prepare meals better in a healthier way to help you live a longer life, you know? We will be receiving different resources and programings from our partners, and we intend to make that available to the community and make that available to those who come into the Innovation Hub. And some of those things are usable items. Some of those things are tangible, some of those things are resources where it helps them along their skill path or their journey to whatever solution they are looking to solve. Next slide, please. The, the great thing is, we kept help open, because help is different for everybody. Help for somebody might be helping them to understand a skill set is, what we would think is basic is filling out an application, but that may be a huge hurdle. Help may be financial literacy. Help may be actually understanding what you're putting in your body. Help may be something physical, you know, the fitness that we would like to provide. It may even be a skill set where someone wants to understand, you know, how do I create this, whatever their ideas, or how do I go about making this business work? We intend to wrap mentors and program and guidance around all the services provided at the Innovation Hub for the people. And there's nothing that we're looking to say, come here and pay for this. It will all be provided. If you are willing to learn, we're willing to teach. If you take the time to improve your life, we're going to give you the resources and the skills to do so. That's really what we're at at the end of the day. We hope that we can get buy-in from the community, because this is a good thing. This is us saving us. This is us being our own resource. We've looked so many different ways for other people to help us, we now have the opportunity to help ourselves. We're coming together, building together, raising whatever money, providing whatever programming or resources, and we need everyone's help in order to make it successful. And that's why we stand before you. Next slide. Our stakeholders, really the stakeholders comes from every walk. You know, you all here today are stakeholders. You know, the people in the community, the investors, those who come on as mentors, those who intern to help us move the program forward. The universities that are already stepping up and helping us on our 75th anniversary documentary. The corporations who are already helping us up on the cleanup and building a mentorship program. There are so many people that are reaching out to us and say, hey, we want to be a part of this. We see what you're doing, and we know that we can make it better, and here's how. And we're just keeping the door open to say, bring your how, bring your better. We need that. We, we receive it, and we want to get it to our community. Next slide. So the measurement of our success sustainability is fourfold. Really, we're looking at the overall impact. What are we seeing different? We know that there are stats in our community that says what our, our median incomes are. We understand some of the family makeups. We understand some of the skill sets. So, we looked at that and said, what can we do to put things in place to make a difference, and then how can we measure so we can continue to make that difference? You know, and this is our guides you see here on the screen. This is the guide that we're using to continue to make that difference. And that will still change, because as we go through the programs and actually execute them, we'll see other things that we need to do to make it better, and we're willing to do just that. We're looking for our partners and the resources to be able to continue to grow and continue to keep putting program and opportunity in front of the people that need it the most. Next slide, please. Our sustaining leaders are tomorrow. There's so many ways that we can do this. We've seen some of the work already being done, and we're not recreating the wheel. We're taking those opportunities to learn from that and implement it, and then bring in anything else that we think can enhance that. You know, as you see here, we're working with the elementary school. We're going to look at coding, future work, putting on competition so they can showcase the skill sets that they're learning, and also give them opportunities with some of these competitions, there are scholarships involved. So, once we teach them skill sets of coding, we would love to get them in teams and entered into these contests that they have around the city that not only give them a chance to showcase what they learned, but give them a chance to go to some scholarships for schools. You know, community service is huge, as you see with our cleanup. That's a big thing. We want to make sure that our community reflects who we are. Not so much what we may be going through at the time. This community was one of the greatest black communities in the nation, and we still believe we can be that again. We just need a little work. We need a little help. We need a little resources. And we are that resource and we're that help to ourselves and our community partners that are coming in. Say it again?
We're still that. He says, one of the greatest communities around, we're still that.
We are still that, but we need to be recognized as that. And how we get recognized as that is by having ample resources in our community. You know, we, the great people are still here, so we're still the great community. But looking on the outside end, we don't look like we have those resources. We don't look like we have those opportunities. We're going to show that we do.
We got to polish it.
Yeah, absolutely. You are, you are very correct. Absolutely. So, and that's, that's why we're putting these different programs in place to show that there's leadership in this community, and to continue to foster new leadership, that next line of leadership, those younger people that are coming behind us that will eventually lead this community. We want to make sure that they have the skill sets that are here in this community and showcase them to create the impact to the communities and the families that live here. Next, next slide, please.
Yes sir. I'll pull up the floor plans. That was the last one. That one, and the next one is the floors, is the, is the, is the floor plans. And then after that, you'll get into the whole 50-week programming and to what will be in there. Steve, what do you want to go?
Yes sir.
Okay, alright, so.
Go to the floor plan, and then we'll go from there.
Okay.
So, some of you may have, may be aware of this floor plan. You may have seen it. What this shows is truly how we intend to build out our Innovation Hub and what can take place in those different spaces. Everything from the financial literacy courses, the media courses, the maker space, the garden, the kitchen, all these things are ways that we see that we can impact our community and create the resources for them to understand what it is that they want to do, or what solution they want to solve, what, what problem they want to solve and gain the skill set to do so. And this will continue to grow in the programming. Right now, the opening spaces we have are people that are committing to providing not just the programming, but the resources to getting it done. That's where the self-sustaining part comes in. We don't have partners that show up just to put their name on something. You can't just put your name on anything. You have to provide programming. You have to provide people. You have to provide resources in order to enact this change. That's what we're asking for people. We're not just asking for a check. If you have money that you want to provide, we have a place for that. But inside of this hub, we want to make sure that all the programming we provide, all the workshops, all the opportunity is not one and done. That it's ongoing, and this is how we do it, by getting partners engaged and helping them to understand the level of engagement. Not just cut a check, take a picture, and walk off. No, we want a commitment. We want an ongoing commitment from these corporations who have the ability to be mentors, who have the ability to provide resources, who have the ability to help us work with having pathways to not only train these individuals, but hey, they have jobs. What is it that you're looking for, for someone coming to G? What skill set do they need to come into Procter and Gamble or Fifth Third Bank? What skill set do they need to come to the university? We want to equip them from people within who already know. They already know, hey, at our company, we're looking for this. This is the skill set we're bringing so that you can be prepared to serve if you choose to serve in this way. Go, go into the 52-week, please? And if at any time, if someone has a question, please stop me. I'd love to answer that question. I just want to share with you what we have as an overall, but I can definitely get specific to any of your interests or concerns at any point there. So this deck here, really just overall talks about the phases that we're looking to go through. Okay, there we go. Are you there? Yep.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, we're looking at the phases. So we're looking at the phases of the Innovation Center, the hub, and then the community, how it will generate revenue and what it looks like. So you've seen the layout of our initial space that we have. Alright, that's going to be able to generate and create programming that will build on as we continue to grow and we purchase. What we would love to do is purchase the Innovation Hub. At the Innovation Hub, of course, we've got much more space, which gives us the opportunity to not only just create much more programming, but also to house some of these businesses or solutions that we're creating with our community. So now, not only can you come there for programming, but that may be where you start your entrepreneurial business at. That may be where you start your opportunity to help teach others the skill sets that you've learned. You know, there's a place to house some of the, art, some of the programming, some of the mentorship, some of the different opportunities that we'll have for our community will be housed there. And as we grow, that will start to generate what we look at to start then to buy back our community, not for the sake of the organization owning it, but for the sake of the community owning it and doing with it in the development process, what they see is a great way to do it. You know, we don't want to tell people what they need. What we want to do is show them that they can have what they desire. That's our goal. So, this is our phases to getting that to our community and being that stepping stone in any way that we can to stability for those or upward movement for those who already have stability. Next slide, please. So, our phase one, as we shared, that's the Innovation Center, which you saw the floor plan for. As I've spoken to, we're going to have programming there. We're going to have some pathways started there, and we're going to continue to grow from there. As that becomes in place in our programming roles, we're going to look to continue to grow and raise the money that we need to be able to not just keep the cleanup going, not just keep the innovation going, but look at possibly starting the process of acquiring the place that we want to have as the Innovation Hub. Alright, here you have outlined the different costs of the programming. Excuse me. The programming and the, the different things that will be available there, the resources. We're still developing some of those costs, because we're still finding out what it is that the community wants. You know, we have partners that says, this is what we can provide, and we're more than happy to receive those things. But there's a lot of things that we want to understand, well, what does the community want? And how can we then stand in the gap and find a resource and opportunity to provide that? Alright. We'll go to the next slide there. This who is speaking to, there we go. Yeah.
Yeah.
So this is our plan for how we're going to do our programming. Our programming is all year round. We don't have just some programming for a couple of weeks. We intend to provide programming all year round and wholeness programming. So we'll speak to the health and wealth of the community, as well as providing them with resources to improve their pathways, the way that they're looking to do in their life, whether that's job readiness, whether that's professional skills, whether it's financial literacy, or they take a pathway that they want to learn something specific. And we can provide programming to assist in that manner, even to the level of certifications where there's opportunity at the center. Next slide, please. Okay, perfect. So, as you see, we've really done some work and really leaned on some resources that are already established to help us understand how we can create this and how we can make it sustainable. And who do we need to make it work? One of the big partners we need, of course, to make work is you all. You can help us understand what we need to do to make sure that we're in accordance, and we're following the guidelines that you would have us set and follow, and making sure that we're being the resource and we're being the piece that the community needs. You know, so that's where we look to you from your guidance, as was stated earlier. This is a great community. There's a lot of brave people here. So we want to lean on that knowledge and expertise to say, what is it that we need and how can we help? So any questions for me?
Members?
Yes.
Do you have questions?
What phase is this in now? What are we actually doing with it at this point?
Did you ask, did you ask what phase we were in?
Yes. Or?
We're, we're in phase one. We're still?
You still, could you, planning, are you, well, these are all the plans and stuff, but what's the next step?
I don't know, I don't know.
Yep. So, architecturally, sir, we are wrapped up with concepts. So the conceptual plan is in place. In order to submit to Hamilton County for a building permit, we need approval from your board from, from the zoning standpoint, allowing the, this use to happen. And that's why you, you just heard this great presentation about the purpose, you know, of the Innovation Hub. And I just love the way he stated us helping us. I think that's powerful, but we need, we need your, we need your permission.
Yeah. Personally, you got mine. I'm, I applaud you guys for what you're trying to do. I applaud anybody that's trying to do anything positive in this community, because you know, something needs to happen. Everybody else is doing great things, and we, we seem to be at a standstill. So yeah, we need to pump our kids up. We need to pump the community up and kind of grab another gear, you know, making things happen.
Mr Shockley?
Yes ma'am. Good evening to everyone, and thank you so much for the presentation. I'm just sitting back gathering information right now. One of the things I've seen over the years is that we, we've had great products and great presentations come to the village, but there was no audience there. So, I'm wondering what steps will be put in place or taken to, you know, assess if this is a viable option for this generation?
I see, I'd rather refer to Brother Carlton to answer that question, or Brother Jamie Smith to answer that question. I know Steve and Vince can both answer it, but they both have their respective roles. I can answer it too, but just given my, my seat on council, I'd rather have other members of the, of the, of the organization kind of speak on that, so. So Carlton or Brother Smith, if you guys kind of want, if you, if you felt comfortable enough to answer that question, Mr Shockley, feel free, if you kind of wanted to elaborate on that end.
Can you repeat the question?
Sure. Okay, yeah, so I was stating that, you know, we've had a lot of great presentations and products brought to the village over the years. But there just was no audience and no, nobody to receive that product. Like for instance, one year I was having a conversation with a former city manager and I asked, was inquiring about why we don't have a library in our neighborhood. And the response was basically, you know, we've had one at one time, but because the participation had gone so low that they end up closing it. So I would, the question is, what's being put in place or, you know, to assess if these things that you're presenting will be viable for this community and this generation?
I would love to take a stab at that. One, thank you for having us, and it's definitely a good question. One of the key things that's, you know, centered on this as well is my brother's keeping Lincoln Heights, right? We had the fortunate opportunity to, to start the first chapter here in the Cincinnati area. And with that, there's some resources, but more importantly, it now allows us to put an intentional focus on the youth of the community in a way that we haven't been able to, right? And you know, it comes, you know, it comes through this lens of, you know, even as we, what got us to this point was wanting to be able to create, you know, be those people that we wish and create those institutions that we wish we would have had as kids, right? I was in the seventh grade when the Y shut down. So I remember what happened to my generation and them not having those safe places and those safe havens to go. And then, and so that's part of it. And then the other part, and particularly when we talk about the Innovation Center in the lower sub, or you know, or down the hill, right? There's still parents who won't send their kids or walk all the way up to St. Monica's. So there needs to be a space in the lower half that still, you know, creates that space for kids to go. They can do homework. They can, you know, utilize technology. All of that's really, still really important. And, and then the other part of it is, you know, we're centered on innovation because we want to get tied into, you know, careers and opportunities of the future.
That's me.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
I'd like to say, from what I'm gathering that you're trying to do, I think it's very needed, because I went to Lincoln Heights Elementary and High School. I quit in the ninth grade. So, when I went to- So when I went to school, we didn't have computers. If my daughter wasn't here to help me do this Zoom session, I couldn't do this. And sound to me like you guys are going to be able to, anybody that's not computer savvy could walk into your place and learn. Somebody will mentor them or teach them how to, you know, and this, you know, this is what's needed. You know, they need to keep up and catch up. I'm cool, well, I don't mean to get ghetto, but I'm all right. Because I'm past job and career, I already have a job and a career. But I'm thinking about the young brothers and sisters in this community that don't have. And yeah, it sounds to me like you guys are trying to have a place for people to come and pick up on technical skills that they don't have at home or a privilege to use and to train our people in any way, you know, I think is a blessing. And I applaud you guys for just trying to make something happen. I don't see too many other things going on that nobody else just don't making any moves to try to save our people. So if I can do anything to help, I'm, you know, dial me up. But I pray that you guys make it, I hope this is a big success and you got my vote right now in upfront, you know, because I, I say go for it and hope for the best. I mean, you can't win if you don't try. So let's, you know, go ahead and do this.
Mr. Master, Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Your comments?
Well, I see all of this as a positive step in the right direction. More or less back to a place that we originally came from, in my opinion. Because Lincoln Heights used to be like a self-contained economy of its own back in the day where we had an entrepreneurial mindset to work in addition to our day jobs. That's what we had to do to be able to have some of the finer things or additional things that we desired in life. And we kind of strayed away from that. A lot of people went into the factories and with the higher wages out of those clock jobs, people started to leave the community. But the people who were had the corner store businesses and the restaurants and things and who took their regular day job skills and offered them back to the community at a reduced rate, that kind of made the whole community work. And what I see this being is something that's going back to that concept. So I've always believed self-sufficiency is the greatest efficiency. And, you know, it's not always about a four-year degree. I think that's been pushed because it's migrated into the territory of of really a way of people adding to their income or shareholder base. So now we've got people with that concept that it's got to be a four-year degree. They're really putting themselves a lot of times in a lifetime of debt ever escaped from. And, you know, to push a different narrative because we are, society is becoming starved for, for skill-based labor, you know? So, you know, where this is going, I just see it as a positive thing and anything I can do to contribute, you know, I'm willing.
Okay, I just want to say that I do applaud the, the group who have put this together, this presentation together. I don't want to be a Debbie Downer, but I do have questions. And I am not sure that I have them in any order. And I'm not really sure that they can be answered tonight. But the biggest question that I have, the most important, most critical one is who is we? I've heard we, 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 I have not heard the name of the organization presented here tonight. And perhaps if I didn't, if I did, if it was presented, then I didn't hear it and I apologize for that. I want to know who we are. I want to know how, I hear you talk about we are going to raise money. And in one part of the earlier presentation, someone said, we have money and we have not used the money, we understand how to budget the money and we can demonstrate where the money has gone, similar, those kind of concepts. I think that if, if the village is going to embark upon a project such as this, those questions and many more need to be really answered, they need to be laid out. Because I do know from my own experience that you can't raise money unless you can demonstrate one that you have had done a project, that you have a financial wherewithal, that you have audits to make sure that money that will be invested into your project is going to help, one, the operation, as well as the sustainability that you talked about. So, so I personally have a myriad of questions that I don't believe can be answered tonight because I haven't formulated them in a logical order. I, I do think that it has merit and I'm willing to listen beyond tonight. And if, if the mayor is still in, on, on, I think I see your picture, mayor. I wonder, I wonder, is it possible? First off, let me ask this, everyone on this call, have they gotten their COVID shots, one and two, if you plan to take it?
I got one.
So everyone has?
My second on the eighteen.
Okay. So my question then, about fourteen days after you've gotten your second shot, you're deemed to be safe. And I'm wondering if a project such as this, it seems to me that there needs to be face-to-face discussion about this and we can do this in a safe way, mayor. I do believe it can be done and it can be done at City Hall in a safe way. And so I would like to ask the committee, one, are you willing to, to do this? Because we need to meet people who are on, who are the we, need to be face-to-face, we need to know who they are, we need to understand their background and, and all that they do bring to the table. You got a sound plan, it seems like. I don't know if Ms. Randolph sent us all of this information in advance. If she did, then I'm, I was negligent and did not read it. I can't make, will not even personally make a decision or recommendation until I have had it in, it's like buying a new car, you know? You got to kick the tires and determine whether or not it is a safe vehicle or a vehicle that you want to invest in. I think that we shouldn't go forward unless we have the documents in hand. Unless we are able to discuss it and agree or disagree, but do not become disagreeable. Because all of us are not going to agree on every single thing that is presented. But if it's for the greater good of the village, then I think it's worth taking a step back and seeing if we can meet with everyone on the committee or, and as well as all of the men who have presented here tonight. Face-to-face and get a really good understanding of the project.
Madam Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
So that was, that was, that was what I knew what was going to need to happen. I did want to say as far as the phases, one, two, and three, council did not get that information. We got one of the documents that Ms. Randolph was able to send out to you. With that being said, I would like to see, I thought Mr. Mercer, I think he might basically was invited, I wasn't sure if he was able to attend.
We got an email back from him.
Okay.
But I think Mr. Mercer, he needs more information as well.
Yeah, so I am, I am in agreement that a conversation needs to happen. And so today for me was you all coming together and listening to, to Mr. Easley. I do, did inform Mr. Easley when he came to our council meeting that additional things need to happen as well, not just with Planning Commission, but that when it, when you do want a zoning for something that's in residential, the residents also have to be involved, there is a public hearing involved. The residents, they do come to that and they do have to be notified that a new business or something that's not deemed residential, changing the zoning permit for that needs to happen and the residents do, you do need their input. But a lot of things, a lot of conversation does need to happen. I'm looking forward to us all coming and our residents as well, but you are definitely correct on what needs to happen.
I, I, I hope that, that the group, and I still, I still, I'm still not clear unless it is my brother's keeper, is that the name of the organization?
The name of the organization is the Heights Movement. We have a website, correct. We have a website that has all of our information on it as far as who are our corporate partners who've already committed, what our plans are, what our phases are. It also shows the finances that we've raised, as you spoke to. Yes, we do have to be established in order to raise, to date, we have raised what we think to be pretty substantial. We're closing in on almost ninety, if I believe I'm correct. And we've raised it and put it to work. We've hired over sixty-plus people in the community to do different things within the community, from the mural to just different projects that we've been able to access and get so that we can put youth and put individuals to work. So some of the questions that you asked about, we do have those answers and it is documented for you to be able to see that we can provide, because we do understand that those things need to be in place in order for us to move forward.
Okay, so but are we willing to meet face-to-face in a space that is safe? And a space that has, and have the documents sent to us in advance so that we can formulate our question, be more efficient in, in the meeting? I do personally think that you have a concept. The concept is great. What I can visualize based upon looking at the PowerPoint and trying to understand the location of the space and all the things that you were talking about doing goes beyond me at this point. And I, I want to understand it. I'm willing to give my time and energy along hopefully with the rest of the committee so that we can understand it.
I can tell you that we are all dedicated to meeting or doing whatever it takes for us to move forward. So that is a meeting that we can provide you with the contents beforehand and we meet and discuss it and answer your questions or share more with what our plans are, we're more than happy to do that. At the end of the day, we just want to be able to move forward and serve our community.
Okay, and one other question, you did say that you needed to have quote-unquote approval so that you can appeal to the, the, the Hamilton County for approval for zoning or whatever. And I, I don't think that you need to go to Hamilton County for that. Am I right, mayor? Or I think the village makes those decisions locally?
Yeah, but they do, they do have the Hamilton County planning, one does building, one does permit.
Okay, all right. So, so that, so is there a timeline? Are you constrained by trying to meet some sort of deadline? I'm talking to the group, the Heights Movement. Is there a deadline for you to meet in order to get this project underway?
So it's not so much there's a deadline that we have to meet, we just have goals that we would like to stick to, our milestones of where we can be in the process, the sooner that we can make ourselves available to the community, the better. That's, that's really what we're looking at. So it's not so much that we're trying to set this deadline or meet this deadline. We're trying to meet our goals, we're trying to move forward as quickly as we can.
And those goals are listed on the website?
Yes, they are.
Okay, okay.
And then also, when we talk about the kind of staffing as part of, like, as part of with the Heights Movement, we also have access to AmeriCorps Vistas through MBK Ohio.
Right.
And this will be their official location and we would have those vistas on an ongoing basis. So they would also handle some of the staffing that goes on in terms of keeping the building secure.
Okay. Okay, so let's, let me get back to the committee. Do we want to try to establish a date with the mayor? A date is which we can meet so that, so that these men will know and we can get ourselves set up so that we can do it in a safe, in a safe venue where we're meeting face-to-face around the table, perhaps, and get a clear understanding of what is being asked of us to submit or to, to agree upon and then forward it on to the, to the, to the council. That's why I asked you for a deadline because I know that the council meets the second and fourth, I'm sorry, second and fourth Mondays?
Yes, ma'am.
So.
Yeah, it sounds like Thursdays are good days. Nothing normally is going on on a Thursday, so whatever Thursday that you would like, if Thursday is good.
I'm, I'm open to doing it next Thursday. I think that there is a sense of urgency, I don't want to keep you hanging on. From my perspective, I just want to clearly understand. Because at the end of the day, there may be other options out there. If you got a sound understanding, there may be other opportunities to help you raise the dollars that you're trying to raise as well as the other areas of support.
So Madam Chair, I did have a question. So if you plan the meeting Thursday, after you, you all have got an understanding, when would you like us to plan a public, a public hearing?
I think you, I think you have to have the meeting, you've got to then prepare the information to send out to the, to the public here or have available for the public hearing.
Right, that's why, that's why I was asking, so we can look.
So what I think that we could do is if we could meet next Thursday, one, if all minds are clear and then in agreement, then I think we could agree to the next step. And then I know that you have to have a certain amount of time that you must submit or send out to the community for the public hearing.
Yes, ma'am.
Have a public hearing, we really have to plan for a safe environment, again, six feet apart and mask and all. Again, six feet apart and mask and all of that stuff, so.
But if not, then you may have to do the public hearing via Zoom.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah, we could, I would rather do that cuz you just never know.
Okay.
So, um, I'll let you guys do it, you know, let me know, we can do it at the same time next Thursday. Uh, Ms Randolph can contact ICR, uh, no, um, we'll plan for the council, I'm thinking the council and um we still can see about ICR recording it because it's a public meeting as well.
That's good, and that, that would be good, and we can go back and refer to, cuz then you have access to going back, right?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Okay, um, I did have a, I did have a question, um, it goes towards what you were saying, Ms Lindsay. Specifically, you know, when you mentioned uh materials for you guys to be able to review. Um, is there anything in particular, you mentioned like our backgrounds, do you need our resumes? Um, are you looking for just additional information in terms of uh, what our nonprofit status, like I, I just want you to prove.
I, I would like to know whether, if you, yes, I'd like to see the nonprofit status. I would like to see if, how long you've been uh, uh, operating? How long have you been operating?
So the, the Heights Movement was founded in two thousand and seventeen as an organization.
Okay.
But as a legal entity, uh, has been since uh la- it might have been twenty nineteen was officially.
Okay.
You know, filed with the, the state, but then we, we received our um, five oh one C three uh within the last few weeks.
Oh, okay, good. Uh, the other thing that I'd like to see if you have any financials. I'd just like to see them so that I would know uh what you have received, how it has been handled, et cetera. If that's uh, is that, uh, I guess since you haven't been a five oh one C three, then you haven't had quote unquote, an audit of the re- the funds that you have received, right?
No, we haven't done our audit yet, we don't, so we don't have a, a nine ninety, but we can give you a updated accounting.
Okay.
So, of the funds that have been received. Um, and.
And how they've been spent.
Yes ma'am.
Okay, I think that that will go a long way in um, helping to formulate a, a, a a response that would demonstrate your responsibility, that you're responsive, you're responsible uh, organization, creditable. All of those are pieces that go into getting uh, as you well know, getting funding or getting support, getting people. Uh, cuz the, as you indicated or somebody indicated earlier, it's not only uh dollars, but it's the resources you can bring to the table, people who have skillsets that they can help you in your projects that you, under the volunteer uh part of it. Counts as dollars as well. When you're trying to build a budget and trying to build um credibility among the community and the broader community, the, the financial institutions.
Okay, and uh, would you also like us to share just in terms of other? Cuz I know it was mentioned to a degree within the, the presentation in terms of partnerships, organizations that we're working with.
That would be helpful, yeah.
Other, just from a sustainability perspective, other, you know, grants and other opportunities in terms of sources of funding.
Right, the, the other thing is, do, can you uh share with us any other innovation hubs that are in a hundred mile radius uh, of, of, of Lincoln Heights so that you know, we might check their websites or go physically visit them uh and so forth, just because again, that helps me to clearly understand what you're trying to do. I, and again, I share this from my own experience and as I tried to develop the health center uh, fifty-three years ago. I, I'm speaking from experience and if, and if I could show you the webs on my back, you would understand what I'm telling you. You, you learn from your mistakes, you learn from you know, those uh, there's just so many opportunities to learn how to refine your products so that nobody can challenge you. I mean, they can challenge you, but you got the answers at the tip of your tongue. So wherever this goes, wherever this goes with the va- with the village, you hopefully will will be successful no matter what.
For sure, and so we'll put together some of the, the other locations that we benchmarked um as well, and then.
Have you seen any other innovation hubs or is this your own concept?
Yes, we've, we've seen others.
Okay.
Uh, for sure, and, and also, I guess one of the key things that, that I guess to be mentioned, right, is um, so we had several conversations and this dates back to um, twenty nineteen before the, the pandemic, uh, one being with Main Street Ventures. Uh, the other being the African American Chamber, uh, and the third being uh Hamilton County Development Court. Uh, and they had a real interest in how are we bringing innovation north of the city? North of exit, uh, what is it, exit nine, which is, I think that's pad I, or exit ten.
Okay.
Um, because there's no, there's no spaces that focus on innovation that are outside of the city limits. Uh, they're still within Hamilton County.
And you know, that, that's a good point, and, and that's, and that's again how we were successful at the health center. We were able to demonstrate that there were no primary healthcare providers, providing services to the uh communities of Lincoln Heights and twenty-six other political jurisdictions in Hamilton County out, outside the city. We were able to demonstrate that, and once we were able to do that, doors began to open up. And so that's why we are, while, while the health center is situated in Lincoln Heights, it started in Lincoln Heights. It started at Saint Simons. It went to the community center where the school now sits and then it went down on Stefan. And now we're in seven different locations, but we just completed a facility, a new one out there on Compton Road in Mount Health. So, the opportunity exists for you to be successful and to focus on the county outside of the city. And anyone that knows me in the city and in a county, um, my voice is always focusing on the lack of adequate uh healthcare, oral health, behavioral health care in Hamilton County outside the city, it's always focused on, on the, on the city. And uh Eric Kearney at the, at the chamber was very successful. I mean, very supportive of our projects when he was in the legislature as well as even today, so there, so I'm saying using that approach is a great approach, but gotta be ready when they come to you. You gotta be ready when you go, you gotta have it all together. And you sound like you do have a great product. I think the committee that needs to be uh, a part of this or at some point mayor is the Economic Development Committee. Because at the end of the day, if this is what I think it is, it can create economic development going forward. At some time in the future, I don't know if, 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 if it's necessary or appropriate for them to be involved right now, I'm just saying that that would be a, a, a committee that I think uh could help elevate this concept. Uh, and support it uh as it moves to council.
Madam Chair, I agree, I did have a question though, cuz I know um Mr. Shockley and other um members of the committee may not have the address. Um, so could you all tell them the address in case they wanna drive by and look at get a visual effect of where the location is at, and also I had the, uh, wanted to ask a question. Um, the property, who owns the property?
Okay.
They're owned by Lincoln Heights, the Heights Movement or?
So the, the property is owned by uh Mr. Albert Daniels. And with the, the name Howard and Carlia Daniels, those were his parents.
Okay.
Uh, who originally, you know, lived on that land, they own the, the property itself and the, the adjacent lot next to it.
Could you give them the ad- address?
Yes, and.
I didn't have it, that's why.
Correct me if I'm wrong, it's twelve fifty-six Bills Avenue.
Okay. I think that would help them out as well, thank you, uh, Mr. Collins.
No problem, thanks.
I just wanted to speak to Mr. Shockley's point as well, just on, as I speak to this as a football coach, um. As you talk about sustainability and to argue, um, Princeton Athletics and Princeton Football is fully committed to this program as well. With my brother's keeper and the Obama Foundation connectivity of it, so not only do you have a piece of it where the fact that it's a unique opportunity in the community. You have Princeton City Schools and their football program and making sure that our young folks will also incorporate this into their football and athletic programs as well. From a sustainability standpoint.
Okay, so this means that they won't just be focusing on athletics, but their academics have to match up with, with their, um their sports, great, great. Yes sir, thank you for answering that.
So, but let me ask the question also, did I, I could wait till next week, but when, as you think about this innovation and trying to help students uh be successful academically. You know, the, one of the things that have, have concerned me as well as some of the former teachers, retired teachers who still live in Lincoln Heights are concerned about what COVID has done to us as a race of people uh, in this last year, but more especially the children in our community who we know, or at least I, we believe, I believe. When they were home because they couldn't go to school, I don't believe that they were there doing what they needed to be doing during that time. Because I saw too many of them walking the streets and playing a basketball and all of that stuff. So they weren't really focusing, my concern is the uh fact that uh so many of these kids are gonna, there, many of them are already behind for obvious reasons. Um, if the focus is, as, uh, as you say, um, Mr., I forgot your name. Um, focus on, Mr. Shockley, is to focus on sports and not academics, we're gonna have the same thing that we're talking about trying to eliminate. And so one of the ways that the community can help us or save us from us or whatever your comment was earlier is to try to ensure that that doesn't happen. Some of these kids need help now, they need to be in class twenty-four hours, that won't be enough. If we don't do that, it doesn't matter. All of this other thi- all these other things that you're talking about. They're not, we're not gonna lift or elevate the community as we hope and you know, some of, some of the, some of the kids, and I'm still calling them kids Mr. Mitchell's age because he went to school with some of my boys. Um, you know, those are some of the people that um that we need to be calling back, some of those who have moved out of the community. Uh, for whatever reason they moved out, they need to come back, I talk to my boys about this all the time. They owe something to the community because at the end of the day it enabled them to get to where they are. Um, they need to be contributing in some small way uh, to, uh, other than football or basketball or whatever. So, I think, I think you have something here that can just somehow be expanded upon. Um, and I, I think that if Princeton is committed to their athle- from, through athletics, they need to be committed to an academic uh process as well.
If, if I may, um, so Ms Lindsay, you're, you're a hundred percent correct, um, in that, and you know, one of the driving forces for us, right, we you know, part of this is we all ended up back here in twenty eighteen. Um, one form or another, right? The Rotts was coaching, at the time I was the program director with LHOI, so I was running the after-school program and the summer camp. Uh, and you know, that was one of the things that, that we saw kinda identified and then wanted to get, get better at, right, and even though I left LHOI, you know, still with the Heights Movement. The key goal there was still to how do we become a vehicle that can enhance the programming that already happens? Um, in terms of LHOI, cuz you know, with the after-school program. How do we turn after-school program into study tables, even on elementary level, right? Where you're playing sports, but you gotta go to, you gotta go get your homework done before you can come down to practice. Right, how are we creating some of these vehicles and these touchpoints with kids from the moment they're four years old all the way until their career? And that's really the goal that we're really uh and, and centered on, and part of that is through MBK. But that was a golden, an agenda that we had from the beginning. Uh, just understanding what were some of the deficits that the kids were facing on the elementary level? Then how did that transition to middle school, um, and high school, uh, cuz a lot of kids run into a buzzsaw uh, in terms of discipline when they get to the middle school, right? We love Principal Bailey at Lincoln Heights. Um, but she cares for our kids in a, in a way that's a little bit different than when they get to the middle school and things are, when things gotta be uniform in terms of a discipline policy. Our kids really run up, run up against that um, in a, in a real way and to figure out how do we create those intervention points? And just, you know, pour in.
That's a parental uh challenge and that's a community challenge, it's a church um, uh, challenge, you know, it's all of that. And, and you know, kids need to be disciplined and I'm not necessarily talking about beating them. They need to understand and respect, our kids were never allowed, never ever allowed to disrespect a teacher. Unless, uh, even if the teacher were to physically hit them, they would bring it to us. But they weren't allowed to do that, we didn't allow it, period. And so, those are some of the, some of the challenges that we face in this community today. And um, uh, it, it, there's, there's a lot, but the other thing, two things, and I'm gonna be quiet, thing number one had to do with um, innovation. Another way to be really innovative and creative, you talk about a steady table. Why couldn't the innovation expand to um Saint Simons uh, what's that, the school, oh shoot.
Um, St. Monica's Recreation.
But yeah, I mean, I think, I think, I think this village is small enough that it could reach across the village. I think the whole concept of upper sub, lower sub, I haven't heard. I, I didn't grow up out here, but when I married my husband and moved out here. I used to hear that, he and Damon Lynch and some of the other people that he grew up with. That upper sub, lower sub, we bring that on ourselves, we need to forget that. And so, there shouldn't be, this, this village is too small to uh, to, to have upload those. small to, uh, to have upload those kids. They will walk from Semen Street or Shepherd Lane up there if they want something. Or they'll walk, they'll walk from Mount, um, Matthews Drive down to Semen Street if they want something. We shouldn't have that mindset under any circumstances. We, we are our own worst enemies in so many ways. That can't exist.
We, you, Madam Chair, you know, you're absolute, absolutely right. Even when we have events at the village, uh, at Serenity Park, when we do National Night Out, we notice that a lot of the, uh, participants, the residents and the kids are at the lower sub. And when St. Monica has an event, unless something is, you know, they're having a big dinner or something, then everybody will come up to the top of the hill or they're giving a, a presentation or something. But we noticed that a lot of the children, when they walk in throughout the village, when they leave St. Monica, they're going to the upper sub. And so it's the, it's the mindset and, um, that we need to change. Um, I know it's gonna take a lot of work, but we need to, we need to work at working together, uh, and, and changing that.
It is a mindset. And the question would, I think I heard Carlton, you say something earlier on about surveys that you have done. Where, what has been the, what, what had, what is the outcome and where is, what is the? I, I, I'd like to know what questions were asked on the survey? And what then were the responses? How are you going to, is, does that survey determine your goals? Or was it your, not only the survey, but your heart and your, your interest in trying to improve uh, rolled up into these goals that you, you've, 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 uh, determined? Is that how it, how it came about?
It, it was a combination of both, right? In terms of community initiatives, kind of some of the early volunteerism, even before we were officially in, in Oregon, uh, legal entity. Um, those were largely based off of the survey. Uh, and figuring out how do we, you know, do better in terms of the, the bringing about things that the community wanted to see, um, and create those opportunities. Uh, even all the way down to the, the, you know, the gifts for grades, that came as an idea from one of the parents. Some of the things around like recreation and needing to support the, or, or our support around the Lincoln Heights Tigers and, and kind of strengthening that organization from a infrastructure perspective. Um, supporting the cultures and the things that they need, um, that came directly out of, uh, a consistent call around, you know, recreation, things for the kids to do and, and that whole piece. Um, and, and it definitely influenced a lot of what, you know, what we found from parents in terms of the actions, cause I was still at L H O I, I'm still program director. Terms of the things that we were providing and the communication, trying to strengthen the communication with parents and getting them active. We even had a parent engagement, we hired somebody who specifically of a parent engagement. Um, and they were doing events on a monthly basis for the kids and the parents who were part of the after-school program. Uh, so it was, some of those things did come out of the, the surveys. And then the other, the other parts of it is just kind of taking advantage of just some of the economic realities that exist. Um, even, you know, mention the conversations that we had with those other entities wanting to bring more innovation to the northwest corner of the county. Um, but then also this reality of, you know, them creating a tech corridor from G E headed north in, in, in the goal of making Cincinnati and Dayton into a metroplex like Dallas, Fort Worth. Right? And the Arrow Hub being, uh, an initial part of that. And then it's gonna keep growing and, you know, working with the kids on even at elementary, middle school level, getting them those skills. And then them having a, the ability to then, you know, go off to college, or one, be on the pathway towards college. Getting a degree in, in a lot of these, these fields and these growth industries that exist. And then getting a job right along seventy-five, you know, in the next ten to fifteen years. You know, that's, that's kind of the ultimate goal, right? Where you can come through this neighborhood, get access to a bunch of resources, get pointed in the direction in terms of skill development. Go off and then you have a reason and an excuse to come back. Um, to your point, you mentioned so many people, um, you know, they benefited and, and I would say, you know, you guys generations benefited in a way from, uh, of Lincoln Heights in a way that we didn't. We got, we, you, there was a number of you that were still around, right? That we still got that wisdom and I'm an eighties baby, so I was, you know, everything you talked about, about discipline, we wouldn't allow none of that either. Uh, but, you know, in terms of seeing it, right? And having those clear examples and those success stories, those successful businesses and all of those, those pieces. Uh, that's a big thing for us is like, you know, we start, start investing that time and intention in the, in the youth now, you know, start, start with the, the hardest part of the sustainability plan. And then from there, you know, ten, fifteen years, they have an opportunity to come back. Um, and I've, I, I fully believe in the council as currently constructed in their earnest, you know, drive to wanna see things get improved in Lincoln Heights. In a way that I can't say I always believed in in yesteryear, right? I, you know, I believe we have a council who wants to move things forward. And, um, so I believe in, you know, ten, fifteen years, we keep pushing along, you know what I mean? Lincoln Heights will definitely be on this path towards making us a sustainable community again, and we just wanna do our part.
Carlton. Yes, real quick. Are you aware, um, before the epidemic hit, like Mrs. Lindsay was saying, her son and some of the, our other former classmates, about every three months, we would get together on a Sunday and meet at Dave and Buster's. And, uh, at one of those outings, Myron Simons, who was on, uh, Princeton's, uh, school board, he was there. And he was saying that there was a program that's in place in conjunction with Cincinnati State and U C for students who are gifted in, um, math and the technical fields to where they can earn college credits and work their way up to getting a, uh, a free ride through the engineering programs. That, that program?
Yes, and so that's, one part of that is through College Credit Plus and then Princeton. Um, in the last couple of years have created STEM track. Um, even while, while you're still in high school, where you're taking the necessary coursework that then puts you in, in, on track to, to still take up those majors when you get to college. Um, and that's something that we're definitely trying to plug ourselves into. And for us in terms of academically, um, we're focused on STEAM, right? Science, technology, technology, engineering, arts and mathematics. Um, we wanna focus on STEAM, we're working on developing a pipeline for STEAM. Um, and then creating opportunities from elementary, middle school and high school to then kind of pipeline these kids into these opportunities, um, and programs. And that's something that we're working with, uh, with G E on, uh,
So as it stands now, are there any of, uh, the kids from the community in that program?
I'm not positive. I do know, I do know that they're doing more to strengthen that program. There was ten kids from Princeton uh, who went into, uh, the College of Engineering last year and they was accepted in as freshmen. Um, so I do know that they're, they're making a push to do more of that at Princeton.
How many of those kids are from Lincoln Heights or Woodlawn?
That I'm not sure of. I, I just got the numbers on the, I got the numbers from U C, not from Princeton, sorry.
So, so once again, one of the ways, you see, uh, a lot of times there, we've gotta go out in order to be successful. Because there, I think anyone who thinks that in today's society, we're going to find everything and build everything we need in this community in and of itself. It's not, they're not, there's not a critical mass. So you gotta be able to demonstrate that you can pull other groups out. I think that, that Lincoln Heights, Lachlan, Hollydale and, um, Woodlawn. Clearly, when you talk about the black experience, you talk about the low-income experience, you talk about, uh, and yeah, we have to talk about the Latinos. A lot of people in this community specifically say, oh, there's too many Latinos down there at that health center. You know what I mean? There's too many of this and that. But the world is, has changed. And we need to realize that. We need to realize that and capitalize on any dollars that are made available to you to do what you need to do. Even if it means you gotta bring other people into the, a- and, and, and that's part of success as well. That's part of sustainability. Yeah, I, I. You can't, you can't, um, we can't segregate ourselves. Um, Lincoln Heights, I have dubbed it, uh, over the past, more and more the past two years have I thought about it being a little, um, uh, uh, Wall Street like the one in, in, um, Tulsa.
Yes, ma'am.
And I can name all of the businesses, again, I didn't grow up out here. All the businesses that this community, even some people who grew up out here didn't know. They didn't know there was a movie out here, a movie house out here. I didn't know some of the things, two pharmacies. Now, who would ever thought that? Two pharmacies in a small town like this. A lot of rich history. That needs to be built upon. And again, this hub that you're talking about, I think can be the catalyst to do some of that. But you gotta think, you gotta think broader. It can't be so focused. You gotta start somewhere. I, I don't deny that. And we gotta always protect us. But in order to protect us, sometimes you gotta go out. It's just like many other families who lived in this community all those years, had to go outside of Lincoln Heights to earn a living. And they brought that back. They brought their learnings, they brought their, uh, uh, dollars and spent them here and other places. You gotta go out sometimes to come back, to build. And I think you have a good opportunity, but you gotta be patient. You gotta look at every single thing that's going on. You can't, it, it's not gonna happen overnight. And I, I'm glad you said something about fifteen years. The one thing you ought to also consider, you talk about educating the kids in this community to everything, STEM, whatever. They need to learn about the politics as well. They need to understand governance. They need to aspire to serve on city council. They need to understand what it's like or what it means to be the mayor of, of a small town like this. You know, there, there's so many opportunities.
Mr. Lo, I, I was gonna just, I've gone because I saw it in the presentation as well. There was a section in the presentation that just spoke on what you just spoke on as well. If you looked at on the, the, the last slide, where it talked about building, uh, Building Leaders for Tomorrow.
Okay, good. So anyway, I, 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 I think you have a, a good foundational press, um, foundation that needs to be built upon and you just need to be focused and to be patient and to work at and be, you gotta listen. We all have to do this. Listen with open minds. Listen with open minds. That's one way, that's another way of becoming, making your project successful. You gotta even listen to the devil at times. You got to.
Always learn from it.
So I, I don't mean to be preaching or being a, a, a mother figure here. I don't have all the answers. God knows, I've been on this earth eighty-four years, but I don't have all the answers. I do have some scars and I'm willing to share what I can with you. Um, and li- willing to listen with an open mind. But just because, um, I do that, you know, I'm gonna ask the critical questions because they were asked of me. And that's how, and I don't usually pat me on the back, but that's how I think I was successful in bringing home the bacon to, like, where. If you just stop and think about this health center here in Lincoln Heights today, is one of Lincoln Heights' top industry, if you, if you think about it. We provide jobs and we have over the years provided jobs for Lincoln Heights residents, those who chose to stay or who, who could stay because they, they wanted to work and not, you know, I didn't have any problems with uh, uh, dismissing people if they didn't follow the guidelines. Because at the end of the day, our goal was to build a health system primarily for the residents of Lincoln Heights. That's how it started fifty-three years ago. And that's what it is today, but you, we couldn't build it, uh, uh, on its own. That's why Moxley doesn't exist today. That's why Neil's grocery store doesn't exist today. That's why a lot of those words don't exist today, cause there was not enough critical mass, not enough volume in those entity, enters, entities in order to be successful, sustainable. That's what you gotta look at. How are you gonna sustain it? That's not what you asked for me today, and I'm sorry, but I just had to say it.
We, we, again, we're, we're eighties babies, so. We grew up listening with our mouths closed, so. It's all good. We appreciate it.
So are we all, uh, uh, in agreement with next Thursday at six thirty?
Sounds good, yeah. Yeah, I'm, I'm in.
Okay. Uh, I hope we can do it face to face if, if everybody is, is, uh, is, feels comfortable doing that.
Myself, for one, I haven't started my, uh, series of shots yet, but.
Why? None of my business, I get it.
I'm not really out in the public a lot, so I, it's not really, hasn't been a pressing need, you know, I'm, I'm retired and I'm probably ninety-five percent. I was probably living, uh, socially distanced before it was, before it had a name, so.
Do you get mail?
I do.
You get packages?
I do.
Do you go to Kroger?
I do.
And you touch all of the stuffing Kroger?
Yeah, I take the precautions, though. I've got my hand sanitizer in the car and my Lysol spray in bundles and.
Okay, okay.
So, but I will, I will get started with, uh, setting up an appointment to give my first injection.
We do it down at, or they do it at the health center. I've retired, but.
Okay. I'll get in contact with them if that's part of it.
Okay, so, um, this has been good for me. I hope that, you know, that it has been good for the rest of you and that at least we have started a conversation and so that we can all be uh, informed and that we can make an informed, uh, recommendation to the council when it's time.
Uh, is us having the shots necessary for the meat? Cause I haven't had mine yet and.
Are you interested in getting it? I can get it for you. Quick, fast.
To be honest with you, ma'am, uh, uh, I'm, I'm still. To be honest with you, ma'am, uh, uh, I'm, I'm still on the, on the fence about it. So if that's an issue, I can meet over, over line, you know.
Okay, but let me, let me just tell you that I think I, 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 I have, and I'm gonna talk to the mayor about. I think I have something that will make, that can help us be, you, are, do you wear masks?
All the time, and I wear gloves.
I do wear gloves, okay. So that we can be socially distant.
Madam, Madam Chair, so uh to Mr. Uh, to Mr. Dave and Mr. Chau. Um we do have the council chambers uh social distance for when we have mayor's court. Um so we do have Plexiglas in front of you along with masks. And we will check, we will also check your temperatures when you walk in the door. And that's for everyone that walks in the village.
I just, just a quick question on that, you know, my, I was asking Vale. Um I saw that uh, that Princeton, when they do their school board meetings, they have a hybrid model. Some are at, in present, some are also at home as well. Is that an option as well, Mr. Lawrence? Uh and for Vale, if that's possible? Where we can do a hybrid model, those that would like to be present, they come present, and those that would like to be uh virtual distant, if that's an option, Vale?
Sure, sure. I don't wanna put anybody in, in, at risk if they believe that they would be at risk. I just thought that it would be a good opportunity for the committee to really roll up sleeves. And, 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 and work um in a safe environment and um. A non-confrontational. Yeah. So however you wanna do it, I'm good with it either way. Whether you wanna continue to do it this way, I just felt like. So a lot of times when you're showing things on the screen, it, it, it is not as um.
Effective.
Effective as it is if you got the paper in your hand and you can write notes on it. You can ask and, and formulate your questions and so forth.
I don't have a problem being there. I just, you know.
And I got a text from Steve and both Mr. Vince that they will be available. I know they jumped off and I'm communicating for them. Either, either way, so.
Either way, my way.
Okay, thank you.
Um other, other quick question, um is there, do we have everyone's uh email addresses? Or is there a listing that we can send over materials?
So I think that if you send it to, to, to the City Hall, to Ms. Uh Randolph. She will be the, in the repository of all of the documents anyway. That we will probably need as we go forward in presenting to the community as well as uh, as well as to council. So I think if it's in one place and then she can send it out to us or we can pick it up or whatever. Depending on, you know, how much it is. But we also, I, I would challenge all the members to go to their website. So that that helps you to understand when we meet. Um, um, when we meet, it will, will be further along. So you wanna give out the website address?
Yes, it's uh www dot theheightsmovement dot org.
Okay.
Yeah, the heights, just like Lincoln Heights Movement dot org.
Okay. That's good. So um the agenda, as you saw it, uh where, where to put my agenda. We, we were going to. I do old business. I just, it's uh eight fifteen. I don't think we intended to meet this long, but it's been all good. I hope everyone be, uh feels that way. Um the old business was simply, uh and each of you received, I think, a copy. Members, you received a copy of our, our, our roles and responsibilities. Um I think we could push that to, um to our next meeting. But I, I would advise each of us to review it and, and, and raise questions. Uh or have a list of questions if you uh do have any questions uh about what the role is of this committee. Uh next week. And, and with it, it, if I, if there are no um objections, I would uh. Call for adjournment. All in favor?
Yes.
Hi.
Cause I thought maybe you wanted to meet for a couple more hours. Okay, thank you so much. This has been really good and educational and uh informational for me.
Thank you all. It's good to see you, Ms. Nad. Looking forward to next, this next Thursday.
See you Thursday.
Thursday, six thirty, at, at City Hall, most likely, right? Anyone who, let, if you cannot be there, please let uh Ms. Randolph know so that we. Uh will know.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good night, everybody.
God bless.